Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to open the September 22nd zoning board of appeals meeting. I want to let everybody know that we are being televised live, so watch what you say. You can't take it back, right? I'd like to now stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to say something about Jim Raffith. He is, he passed away last week, member of this board for several years, valued member of this board, did a great job. We always could rely on Jim. He chose to retire for about, I don't know, six months or something, and then he came back to the board. And I think it's important for us to recognize the fact that he did do a great job for this board and the community as a whole, and we wish him peace and his family peace. So, that being said, we'll move forward. So why don't we start with the first continued hearing.
Five Clamshell Lane, owners Jeanne Scolli request a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family structure located on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 119, parcel 66, Mashpee, Mass., continued from September 8th, 2021, hearing at the request of the board.
Evening, Mrs. Hammond, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Corain, representing Jeanne Scolli, in connection with the proposed raise and replace project that we presented to the board two weeks ago. If the board recalls, there was only one question that was left to be resolved, and that related to the height of the proposed building. The board asked us to go back to our architect and engineers and provide plans that accurately depicted the height of the building. We have done that. I have provided those revised plans. I have also provided a letter from Cape and Islands Engineering, setting forth how they made their determination relative to the height of the building. And I'm not going to review or go over everything that I went over the last time we were here, but I will just suggest to the board that I believe that based upon the revised plans that we have submitted, that we are now within the 35-foot maximum height requirement that is allowed under the bylaw, and I believe we've provided the board with sufficient information to enable them to make that determination.
Did you interact with our consultants on this?
I only interact to the extent that I submit plans to the board.
If it's okay with the board, I think we should hear from our consultants, i.e. the Boston Officer and possibly Chris Gallagher, our town engineer.
Well, I have no issue at all. It shows exactly what the bylaw is, that it's from 35 feet from the average natural grade, and they produce an average natural grade, and I'm happy with them.
One second.
I concur with Dave, and I think it's good moving forward, because everyone seems to be maxing at 35 feet. That it, you know, moving forward, and this is to Kevin, too, to establish a natural grade on your, you know, your average natural grade on your plan, so there's a baseline, so it doesn't put Dave in the position that, once the house gets built, it wasn't established. But it's nice how they actually, the engineer, I mean, the architect did it on the plan that showed the average natural grade and the elevation from it, and adjusted his room heights accordingly.
Yeah, that's basically what we were looking for, which is, and there's actually, yeah, there's a letter, too.
So is it your opinion, both of your opinions, that in fact this applicant has met the criteria in reference to, well, actually, all aspects of the zoning bylaw?
Correct, yeah. I mean, they have every right to go to 35 feet. That's, that's exactly, we're not disputing that at all now. That's their right, but we need to have it displayed the correct way.
Great. Does it, we have a letter. Sharon, would you read those, that letter to the record, please?
It's from Cape and Island Engineering. It's dated September 9th, 2021. It's to Mr. David Morris, the Mashpee Building Commissioner, and in regards to Five Clamshell Lane, Mashpee, Mass., proposed building height. Dear Mr. Morris, as per Mashpee zoning bylaws 174-31, footnote 4 and 18, Cape and Island Engineering has confirmed the proposed building height as 34.82 feet and is under the allowed maximum building height of 35 feet. This height was obtained by calculating the difference between the average original grade of the land prior to construction, adjacent to the foundation line, to the proposed roof peak elevation as illustrated on the architectural proposed elevation plans we reside, received dated 9/15/21. The average original grade was calculated from an on-ground survey performed by our firm and determined to be 13.1 feet, based on the NAVD-88 datum. The roof peak elevation was obtained from the architectural elevation plans information as 47.92 feet. The proposed highest ridge does not include a cupola. Therefore, the proposed building height is calculated as 47.92 minus 13.1, equalling 34.82 feet, NAVD. Please contact me for any questions. Sincerely, Raoul Lazardi Rivera, Director of Engineering.
Great. Four members, comments, questions?
None.
The only comment I have is the last time there was no plan for the third floor to prove that it was 50%, less than 50%. I see one now. I mean, I'm not going to do the calculations. Dave, you comfortable with that? Looks like it's less than 50% to me.
Yeah.
Looks fine to me. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Yeah, so two and a half.
That looks good, too. And I knew Cape and Islands would have it right, but we just didn't have it in writing last time. We had nothing showing those calculations, so.
Sharon, you have anything? Any questions, comments?
No, no, everything seems to be good.
Okay, audience, comments, questions, concerns? Okay, Mary Ann, I have a question. At the original hearing, which was two or three weeks ago, was there anything read into the record that we should, if Scott were to make a motion, that he should be aware of?
Well, we do have, you should probably have Sharon read that one.
Okay, why don't you read that, then?
Oh, yeah.
I just want to make sure that the person making the motion has the knowledge.
Five, this is the Board of Health, Five Clamshell Lane, Board of Health comments. The existing dwelling is three bedrooms, but four primary bedrooms are proposed. Floor plans have been reviewed in our compliant for four bedrooms. A new septic is proposed for four bedrooms. A proposed septic is compliant for four bedrooms. A Mashpee licensed septic installer shall obtain a permit to install a septic prior to the insurance of a building permit. Board of Health, Five Clamshell Lane, this project has been approved by the commission.
Great. All right, well, you see, no comments in the audience, and our professionals are satisfied with the presentation and proposals. So at this point, Scott, would you like to make a motion?
I could make a motion, Five Clamshell, to approve, Five Clamshell Lane owner Jeanne Scolli requests a special permit under section 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family structure on a property located in R3 zoning district, map 119, parcel 66, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mash General Law 40A, section 9. Site and septic design plan prepared for Jeanne Scolli, Five Clamshell Lane, Mashpee, Mass., project five, I'm sorry, project is Five Clamshell Lane, Mashpee, Mass., sheet 1 of 1, date June 1, 2021, drawn by JVBRLR, checked by MC, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, 62321. Revised front yard evergreen to Eastern Red Cedars, 8321. Revised house footprint, 91621. Revised house footprint, finished floor and lot coverage. Proposed residence, Five Clamshell Lane, Mashpee, Mass., Paul Epicarian Architects LLC, A1.0. Front elevation, left elevation, 8.1.1. Rear elevation, right elevation, 8.2.0. First floor, second floor plans, 8.2.1. Third floor plan, roof plan, 8.2.2. Foundation plan, 8.3.0. Sections A, B, and C. Cape and Islands Engineering, proposed building height letter signed and stamped by Raoul Lazardi Rivera, P.E., Director of Engineering, dated September 9th, 2021. Revised 91621. Conditioned on all department, town department comments read into the record.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well done.
I, I, one of those things, I just can't do.
You have to fold it right where it's even.
There you go.
I hate that when I hold it.
Can't trust anybody around here.
That is done. Sharon, set us down here first. You know, come prepared. I did, too, then I realized I didn't have one, then I realized I looked my book here last time, so I'd have it in there, so I lucked out.
All right, we're all set, so Sharon, would you read the first new hearing, please?
We're not set.
We're not set. Okay.
Sharon, we're set.
Oh, what's that?
We're close.
Game on.
16 Echo Road, Unit B. Petitioner Connor Thomas, Boat Butler LLC, requests a special permit modification, SP 2021-38, under 174-25G4 of the zoning bylaws to allow from marine detail and repair business on property located in an I1 and light industrial overlay zoning district, map 19, parcel 3-6, Mashpee, Mass.
Hello, folks.
Hello? Yeah, I, I think what I'd like to, if it's okay with the board, there are some things that we should read in the record now. I believe, isn't there something from the fire chief?
There's a few things.
Yeah, I think we should read them in the record. That way, we can discuss them while the presenter is presenting.
Instead of going back.
Yeah, I think it makes better sense that way. We have that knowledge now.
Okay.
Choose us for one minute. Can I do something for the fire chief?
Yeah, I'm going to read the fire chief.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, this is dated September 21st, 2021, from Fire Chief Thomas Rulo to the zoning board of appeals regarding the Boat Butler. As a result of the plan review meeting held on September 21st, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. regarding the use of a portion of the building, Unit B, at 61 Echo Road, some further research needed to be conducted on the proposed list of chemicals, compounds, and the quantities that was provided. The fire department approves the list and the quantities provided as long as hazardous chemicals are stored in an approved flammable storage cabinet. There should be no spraying of paint or other materials with a compressed air system. The spraying is limited to individual spray cans as outlined by Connor Thomas in the plan review committee meeting. Additionally, the use of propane torch for the purpose of boat shrink wrapping may be used inside, provided the space is equipped with an addition of a CO detector. Storage of all propane cylinders shall be outside the building in an approved propane protection cabinet. Very truly yours, Thomas C. Rulo, Fire Chief. Okay, this is draft recommendations from the plan review regarding 16 Echo Road, Unit B. Glenn made a motion to approve the Boat Butler at 61 Echo with the following recommendations to the ZBA. A light tight tank be confirmed on the property. Fire chief to check on the volumes and storages of hazardous material. His approval will be pending his time and comment. The storage of propane in an approved cage system, there is no parking on Echo Road. 61 Echo Road, the Boat Butler LLC, is a marine service company based in Mashpee, Mass., that focuses in aesthetic work. This work consists of marine detailing and bottom painting. Other work performed by the Boat Butler includes shrink wrapping, electronics installation, and storage. Although most of our work is performed on-site, we use 61 Echo offsite, sorry, offsite. We use 61 Echo Road as a staging and storage facility. Business operates from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Business operates 12 months a year. Please note, the Boat Butler will no longer perform any spraying of marine paints at 61 Echo Road. We have determined it's more cost-effective to subcontract this service to outside vendors.
So is that the last one?
I think that's the last one.
I think, I think there was one more. There was the David Morris relative to the tight tank inspection.
I think, did you read that, tight tank?
I read, there's one from Dave about.
September 22.
Charlie, would you like to read that?
Oh, I see, yeah.
I would be happy to.
Let Charlie do some.
Okay.
September 22, 2021, to the zoning board of appeals, relative to 61 Echo Road. Dear Mr. Chairman, to verify the existence of a tight tank at the above address, the plumbing inspector physically inspected the building and confirmed that a tank serving the entire building is installed and properly functioning. Thank you, David Morris, building inspector.
Okay, if that's all that needs to read in the record, why don't we have the applicant present, and then we'll ask questions after that.
Hey, folks, as stated before, I'm the owner of the Boat Butler Marine Company that operates here in Mashpee. We're applying as the proposed special permit, so that we can continue operating at the 61B location. The main issue that we had, starting, was that we were spraying marine paints through a compressed air system, which was determined to be non-compliant in the area. Going through the different modifications with David Morris, we decided that it was no longer pertinent for us to perform that part of our business, so if we'll be doing that forward, it would be subbed out, you know, to other marine contractors that were permitted to do so within our industry, not within our confines.
So it won't happen at your facility?
Correct.
So you won't be cleaning bottoms at your facility?
We would be cleaning, cleaning the boats at our facility, but the issue before, I believe, was regarding the spraying of the paint. We were doing restorations on boats and so forth.
Well, I, I didn't want to interrupt your presentation. Were you, were you done?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay, so if I could ask a couple of questions, being an avid voter, so, do you anticipate cleaning bottoms at your facility?
We wouldn't clean any, clean any bottoms in terms of pre-painted bottoms. They would just be prepped for new paint. And the any bottom cleaning that would be done would be non-painted bottoms, so boats that did not have bottom paint on them to begin with.
Because every place that I'm seeing now, the, doing the bottom work, has this special catchment area, right, inspected by DEP?
Correct.
And all these other, you know, tight tanks, and da-da-da-da-da-da, right? And so the state's out it quite commonly, and I think it puts you in a different realm if you're going to start doing that.
Correct.
Or to do that.
I would agree, yes.
One of the things that concerns me about this application is that there seems to be a lot of overseeing that needs to be done in the future in reference to, this job, this board has never been the keeper of the keys of any development or anything that goes on, nor should we be. But it seems to me, this is, this is one of the applications, and I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying that it looks like there's a, a lot of overseeing or oversight that needs to be done in the future, inspection-wise, just to make sure that things are not done.
Well, I would suppose that the fire department would check in from time to time. They actually brought their boat to have them work on it, so they will be involved. For me to go out and inspect yearly, I mean, I would have to have an open permit or something on that. But I, dealing with Connor and Mr. Driscoll, who's the owner of the building, if you remember, he had, there was an oversight from my department maybe five years ago about not coming to this board for a special permit. So that's all wrapped up. They were trying to wrap this all up, and they've been very professional in dealing. They understand the issues. The main issue was with the spray booth, it was of, they didn't have a sprinkler system in the building. So that was a big deal, and yet, you know, fire separation from the office that exists at the building. So, again, and they've understood that, so they've adjusted accordingly, and they've been working very well with the fire department and the building department, so.
I would highly recommend someone who was to make that motion probably includes specifically those letters.
Well, that's what I was, my question is, are these considered conditions in all town, town department comments read into the record?
Yeah, they are, but, you know, I like to say including but not limited to those letters. That way, it's specific, because it seems as though there are some thresholds here that we really don't want them to, to exceed. And certainly, David's recommendation seems like that the gentleman's been doing the right thing, and so, you know, I just think it's important to put it in. All right, so having said that, may I ask the consultants, do you have any input, and then I'll go around the board?
No, I, there was really no engineering-related issues. It was more, you know, enforcement, fire, and.
And again, reading that stuff into the, especially with the spray, the spray, the spray painting is probably one of the biggest issues that we have, and that is, you know, not allowed, and that could be read in the record, and we're fine with that.
It's a special permit, so we have some teeth over time for that. So why don't we go around the board? Charlie?
Fine.
I'm good. I'm just going to read in a couple, just conservation, no, not in wetlands jurisdiction, in Board of Health, sea site plan review comments.
And we did, we already read those.
Okay, I just wanted to read them.
You all started a little of that?
Other than that, I'm fine.
Sharon?
No, I'm good.
Okay, audience. Seeing that.
I'd like to make a motion, if I may. If I make the motion to approve 61 Echo Road, Unit B, petitioner Connor Thomas, Boat Builder LLC, requesting a special permit modifications, SP-2021-38, under section 174-25G4 of zoning bylaws to allow for marine detailing and repair business on a property located in the one, I1, sorry, in light industrial overlay zoning district, map 19, parcel 3-6, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit modification under Mash General Law 40A, section 9. The board determined that the applicant meets the use definition under section 174-25G4. Conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the fire department and plan review comments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to post? Gary, unanimous, thank you, sir. Great presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck, Connor. Take care.
I almost said it, Sharon, see? I didn't, though.
Well, Jim usually says it.
Ah.
He's the second king.
Someday, that signature will be very valuable.
I don't know. Kids.
Yeah.
You got it, yeah? Coming back.
So, George, would you like to read the next hearing into the record, please?
Yes. Ten Shorewood Drive, owner Sharon Sangalier requests a one-year, one-year extension of an approved variance V 2020-30, under 174, section 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family structure on property located in R5 zoning district, map 58, parcel 32, Mashpee, Mass. Note, a special permit, SP 2020-29, was issued for this project.
Any motion, right?
I have a motion.
I'm just saying. So, consultants?
No, no issues, no comments.
Okay, so, I actually should have.
Do we have to ask about, only four members voting?
Well, I mentioned to Sharon before she left, she knew she had the right. She said if she was just going to do it, so she knew that was.
Okay, I didn't know if it was her call or the representative's call. I don't know.
Well, why don't we do that? So you, you have four members here. Under state statute, you could ask for an extension of this meeting until such time as you have five, because you would have to get a, not unanimous, three-fourths, right? Or would it be unanimous?
Four now.
So it would be four, yeah. So it would be unanimous, yes. So you'd have to get all of us to vote in favor of it, but you do have a right to not go forward and wait until we have a fifth member, which would be an associate, or actually would not have to be an associate, would be another member. So it's, it's your choice.
Could I proceed?
You certainly may. That is one of your options. Be my guest.
Hi, I'm Alexis Sangalier, one of the residents of the Ten Door Drive. We're accessing an extension because we didn't move forward because of lumber costs, but now we're going to go about and proceed, no matter the cost, so we want to start building the home, I guess.
So you're asking for how long of an extension?
A one-year extension.
Okay.
Sorry, is it a one-year extension to, to apply for the permit? So you haven't applied for the permit yet, or is the permit already been applied for in his, in that window?
I don't think so. I don't think it has been applied for.
It's an extension, the permit's been applied for, so you want an extension to start.
Extension to exercise her.
Right, I just wanted to.
So, so you have a special permit, and that permit was ready to lap, special permit, and she's, she's asked for an extension of the special permit, at which point, during that time of that, if that extension is allowed, she could then pull a building permit?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you're asking for a one-year extension for the special permit?
It's a variance.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a variance.
My mistake, my mistake.
It's an extension of an approved.
It is a variance, my mistake.
You have to act on the permit, and by going for a building permit, that's considered acting on it, you're good.
All right, so you're asking for a one-year extension of the prior issued variance, which is, and I think it's important, we.
We need to read.
So that, the reason why I said special permit, it says, note, a special permit, SP 2020-29, was issued for this project.
Right, it was for the raise and replace.
So.
But the variance requires a year, expires after a year.
What happens to a special permit that has not been utilized in a year?
Three years on a special permit.
Okay, good. So she, I see, that's why I got mixed up in reference to that. So you're asking for an extension on the variance, not the special permit, because the special permit stays intact for three years. Okay. So does everybody in the board understand that, then?
Yes.
Is that clear?
Very clear, man.
All right, so, professionals, what are your thoughts, consultant-wise?
I have no issues.
Anyone in the audience? Anything needs to be read into the record?
Well, there's comments, but they're just, 10 Shorewood Drive from conservation, project's been approved by the commission, and 10 Shorewood Drive, Board of Health, comment, no comment.
No comment.
Yep.
I don't think there's a heck of a lot, other than for you to make a motion, if you'd like to.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 10 Shorewood Drive, owner Sharon Sangalier, request a one-year extension of an approved variance V 2020-30, under section 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family structure on a property located in R5 zoning district, map 58, parcel 32, Mashpee, Mass. Note, a special permit, SP-2020-29, was issued for this project with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of an extension of a variance under Mash General Law 40A, section 10, conditioned that there are no changes to the approved, for site plan potential, 10 Shorewood Drive, Mashpee, Mass., prepared for Sharon Sangalier, prepared by Engineering Works Incorporated, Surveyors War and Associates Incorporated, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, drawn by PTM, job number 104-20, date 5/11/20, checked by PTM, sheets 2 of 2, ZBA approved and stamped on 9/1/2020, conditioned on all town, town department comments read into the record.
Do I have a second?
Circle.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
section ten, conditioned that there are no changes in the, to the approved. For site plan potential with drive Mashpee Mass prepared for Sharon Sangalier, prepared by Engineering Works Incorporated, surveyors War and Associates Incorporated. Scale one inch equals twenty feet, drawn by P T M, job number one oh four dash twenty, date five eleven twenty, checked by P T M. Sheets two of two, Z B A approved and stamped on nine one twenty twenty. Conditioned on all town, town department comments read into the record.
Right, a second.
Circle.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Have fun.
Well done. I did not. I thought she did well.
Okay.
Yeah, they denied it, Sharon.
All because of those two guys.
She'd be in tears if you denied.
That's what she's alcohol for.
That's why we could never have died. Ladies' prayer, it's a problem.
Thank you.
So Sharon, would you like to read forty-one Mercantile Way into the record, please?
Forty-one Mercantile Way, petitioner Cape White Construction, Inc. Request a special permit under one seventy-four dash twenty-four C, one seventy-four dash twenty-five G four six fourteen and one seventy-four dash forty-one M of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of an eight contractor bay warehouse on property located in an I one in light industrial overlay district. Map eighty-eight parcel eighty-seven Mashpee Mass. Owner of record, Tuttle Joint Trust, Timothy E. and Cheryl R. Tuttle trustees.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, Kevin Corain and I have the pleasure of representing Cape White Construction in connection with the application before the board for special permit relief to construct and to use an industrial building situated at forty-one Mercantile. Uh, this project is, uh, not unlike many of the other projects that have been approved, uh, by this board. And in fact, uh, Cape White has been the contractor and in some cases, the owner of, uh, similar projects that have been developed and approved by the board. Uh, I have with me this evening, the principal of Cape White, Joel Jeanquera, as well as a representative of Cape and I, uh, not Cape and Islands, but Down Cape, uh, Engineering, uh, who has prepared the engineering plan in connection with, uh, the project that you see before you. The site is situated in the industrial park in the I one zoning district. Uh, the site is a sixty-four thousand plus square foot lot. Uh, their proposal is to construct a ninety-nine hundred and seventy-two square foot building on this lot, which will accommodate, uh, eight contractor bays of equal size, uh, as shown on the plan that we have also attached here too. So we have the building that's shown here. Uh, that's the exterior elevations of the building showing the, uh, garage doors as well as a small mechanical room at the south elevation of the building. And on the other side, you have access doors to access the unit by pedestrian traffic. What we have here is a depiction of the interior floor plan, which shows the eight contractor bays that have been applied for under the terms and conditions of the permit. Uh, the project has been before both site plan review, uh, and design review and has been recommended for approval. Uh, the proposed use, that, uh, uses that we have applied for, uh, although largely we suspect that, uh, they will be basically contractor bays, but under the bylaw, section twenty-five G four allows for tradesmen shops, which plumbing electrical, which I guess would qualify as well as a contractor bay. And it's also wholesale business and storage use under one seventy-four twenty-five G six. Uh, and the contractor bay, of course, under twenty-five G fourteen. These are all uses which are allowed, uh, in the zoning bylaw by virtue of a special permit, uh, issued by this board. So the building, uh, the building that we are proposing is a building that conforms to all the required setback criteria. Uh, and the uses that we are proposing are consistent with other uses that currently operate in the industrial zone and uses which have currently, uh, and in the past, been approved, uh, by the zoning board of appeals, uh, for buildings of this nature. It's a typical Morton-style building, metal building on slab. Uh, and as you can see from the floor plan, each proposed unit will have its own, um, bathroom facility. Uh, we've also proposed some thirty-three parking spaces, including two handicap spaces. Uh, and we have taken into account that there is always the possibility that some of the operators or users of the contractor bays will construct some type of office space within the building. So we have taken that into consideration in terms of setting forth thirty-three parking spaces, when in effect twenty-two would typically be the required number of spaces under the bylaw. Under one seventy-four twenty-four C, special permits are authorized, provided the board can determine that the proposed construction and use of the building will not adversely impact public health and safety concerns. I've enumerated some of those concerns in my written presentation to the board, uh, which they should have, uh, before them. So I would suggest to the board that the proposal, both in terms of the building and the uses, uh, is consistent with the applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw. And the board would be well within its rights to exercise the appropriate degree of discretion in granting the special permit relief for the construction and use of the building. Uh, if the board has any questions for me, uh, for, uh, Down Cape Engineering or for Joel, uh, then we're more than happy to try to respond to those questions.
Do you want to take questions first? Do you want to read, um, let him, letters into the record?
I think we should read comments and then talk to the town engineer before we get.
Sharon, would you read the, um, any letters into the record, please?
Um, conservation, no comment. Border Health, the border health will review the site and septic plans at the public meeting on September twenty-third. The border health is anticipating to approve the plans with standard commercial property requirements as a condition of Title V variance. I have attached the commercial property requirements for your review and incorporated into the decision if approved. You gonna have me read all that? Okay, border health requirements for commercial buildings. Propo- proposed drainage swells shall have subsurface M D C-type catch basins in leaching structures. The M D C catch basins shall be monitored yearly.
Could I hold, if I can interrupt one second?
Mm-hmm.
Um, professional, you know, engineer-wise, have you confirmed that those, these plans meet those specs?
Yeah, I, um, when we did plan review, I had a, you know, a couple requests and a couple comments. More drainage-related calculations weren't provided. I ran calculations myself based on.
But M D C requirements, the whole thing, you're.
Yeah, and they.
I'm sorry for the interruption.
They more than, uh.
Great.
They, it's a little overdesigned and then the engineer submitted calcs.
Right.
Pretty thorough.
Sorry for the interruption, Sharon.
Okay, M D C catch basins shall be monitored yearly and an executive contractor for servicing of the M D C-type catch basins shall be provided to the border health prior to the insurance of certificate of occupancy. Two, safety data sheets, S D S, shall be kept on the premises in bound notebooks for all hazardous products. The S D S shall be available for inspection by an agent of the border health. Three, hazardous materials shall be limited in volume to two hundred pounds dry weight and two twenty gallons of liquid storage. Hazardous waste shall be limited according to three-ten C M R thirty-point-zero-zero Massachusetts hazardous waste regulations. Storage of hazardous materials outside is prohibited. The executed contract for the removal of hazardous waste from the facility by licensed hazardous waste removal company shall be provided to the border health prior to the issuance of certific- certificate of occupancy. Four, all changes in tendency in or use of each unit shall be approved by the board of health prior to the issuance of a lease or sales of each unit. Five, board of health regulations, part nine, section five-point-zero-zero require the installation of the reserve area to be installed at the same time as the primary leach area. Six, washing machines are prohibited, prohibited on Title V systems. They are considered industrial discharge and require municipal sword or industrial tight tanks. Seven, boat washing is considered industrial discharge and must be addressed in accordance to three-fourteen C M R eighteen Industrial Holding Tank Regulations. Eight, operations shall not cause a nuisance or the operation will be considered noisome trade. Industrial tight tank requirements. One, a plumbing permit shall be required for tight tank installation. Two, tank shall be sealed to assure watertightness. Three, concrete tank shall be monolithic type structure. Four, the tanks shall be tested watertight by holding a full level of liquid for a minimum of twenty-four hours and be witnessed by the plumbing inspector or agent of the board of health.
Um, any other letters need to be read into the record?
I have the draft plan review recommendations for forty-one Mercantile Way dated August seventeenth. Ever moved to recommend approval of a special permit with the conditions discussed by the town engineer, that a stormwater calculation report be submitted and that any potential future office space be reviewed and adequately designed to meet code requirement, compliance requirements with the building and fire departments and that the septic design be reviewed and approved at the future water health meeting.
So I'd like to hear from town consultants, if we could.
Yeah, they did a pretty thorough, uh, you know, calculation book and, uh, their stormwater more than meets what's required. They have a little, actually more leaching than they actually need. They did a nice design.
All right, zoning enforcement, you okay?
It's good use for the zone, good use for the town. No problems.
Fantastic. Um, anyone in the audience? So you're against this, right? It's maybe, it's, no. So you've got the motion down pretty good, I would hope. This is multifaceted, I think.
I think I do, you can correct me if.
At this point, um, we've read everything into the record. We've heard from our professionals, um.
I have no problems.
And, uh, why don't we go around?
No questions.
No questions. You have any questions?
No, I think I've got mine.
Yeah, I have no questions.
I'm fine, all right. So would you like to make a motion, Phil?
I would love to make a motion. I can make a motion to approve forty-one Mercantile Way, petitioner Cape White Construction, Inc. Request a special permit under sections one seventy-four dash twenty-four, C one seventy-four dash twenty-five, G four six fourteen and one seventy-four dash forty-one M of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of eight contractor bay warehouse on property located in I one in light industrial overlay zoning district. Map eighty-eight parcel eighty-seven Mashpee Mass. Owner of record, Tuttle Joint Trust, Timothy E. and Cheryl R. Tuttle trustees with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mash General Law forty-eight, section nine, site plan forty-one Mercantile Way Mashpee Mass prepared for Cape White Construction, date August sixth, two thousand and twenty-one revised August sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Town comments, scale one inch equals twenty feet, signed by Daniel A. Ojala, P E P L S, date eight sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Down Cape Engineering Incorporated, sheet one of two. Building plans, project contractor, warehouse bays, forty-one Mercantile Way Mashpee Mass. General contractor, Cape White Construction, Inc., date issued eight oh two, two thousand and twenty-one. Drawing scale eighth inch equals one foot. Sheet A one, ground floor plan, sheet A two, west elevation, south elevation, north elevation, east elevation. Plan review committee recommendations discussed at the meeting dated Tuesday, August seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one. So I don't have to add that line. Conditioned on all town comments read into the record, conditioned that the border health requirements are met at their next meeting.
Okay, so that covers the.
Well, I was gonna add, including but not limited to plan review comments, but they already had that line.
Okay.
Pretty much.
As long as we covered all those things, um.
Second.
Okay, so I've got a second from Sharon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Take care. I know it'll be another beautiful building that you'll do. There's no doubt.
You don't give more comments.
There goes the neighborhood then.
There you go.
Boy, it's nice having a town engineer now, isn't it? It's nice having a town engineer on the.
It is real nice. Are you kidding me?
There's no, we gotta go.
This is a breeze.
Oh, it's so much, we don't have to continue things because of.
This is, this is terrific. Yes.
It's absolutely great.
It gives you a level of comfort.
No.
It does. We're talking about town engineer and, um, zoning enforcement officer. We're, we're talking about.
Very happy.
The fact that makes it so nice that we can have people, you two really.
Answer questions.
That review and look at things above, it's, you know, it's beyond our pay grade most of the time. And so you sit there and we would leave a meeting and I don't know about you guys, but I'd sit there and say, I don't know if I, you know.
Yeah, we have to go continue because we need to talk to the other town engineer that was representing the town, was part-time filling.
This makes it so nice.
It's superbly efficient. It really is efficient.
It's nice to have the, the petitioners, when we say things, you know, they kind of get, but when the professionals say it right too, and they're like, well, I guess we don't really have much comment because the professional just said it's right or it's wrong.
It actually works. I think we're moving on next to fourteen Pine Ave, right?
Yes.
Well, you're there to protect them.
Fourteen Pine Ave. Petitioner Chris Childs, Patriot Builders, request a special permit under one seventy-four dash seventeen-point-one of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming residential structure. Exists existing foundation to remain. On property located in an R three zoning district, map one twenty-three, parcel forty Mashpee Mass. Order of record, Christopher M. DeSantis and Laurie A. Stucci. Then I have a letter I'd like to read, a request for a continuance dated, um, nine twenty-two. Dear Ms. Romero, as you know, I am representing Christopher DeSantis and Laurie Stucci at fourteen Pine Avenue Mashpee Mass on their application for special permit, which is scheduled for a hearing at tonight's Z B A meeting. The five-bedroom plan we are proposing will require approval from the border health and it is my understanding that it is best to have this approval completed prior to appearing before the Z B A. Therefore, by way of email, I respectfully request a continuance to the October thirteenth hearing. Please advise if I will need to attend tonight's hearing to make this request in person or this email is sufficient. Thank you, Chris Childs, President of Patriot Builders, Inc.
Did you tell him?
I told him that he did not need a PR.
Well, I, I would like to say something in that we're faced with the same issue or one of the issues height-wise and other things. So he, I would recommend, as one member, that that, the applicant meets with our zoning enforcement officer because we, um, his opinion weighs very heavily on this, this board's decision.
He doesn't want to waste, he doesn't want to have to continue again.
Uh, yes, so he might as well meet with the zoning enforcement, and if in fact, maybe i- if the zoning enforcement officer sees fit, maybe he has to meet with our, you know, town engineer. But bottom line is, is there are some issues that I'm aware of and that I was brought aware of. So there's no reason for him to come in front of this board without dealing with them.
True.
That makes sense?
Yep, yep.
Right.
Well, sorry, he did.
So, um, we have a request for an extension until.
I have the date.
Oh, you do?
Yep. I was ready. All right, I'd like to make a motion to continue until October thirteenth. Fourteen Pine Ave, petitioner Chris Childs, Patriot Builders, request a special permit under section one seventy-four dash seventeen-point-one of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming residential structure. Existing foundation to remain. On property located in R three zoning district, map one twenty-three parcel forty Mashpee Mass. Owner of record, Christopher M. DeSantis and Laurie A. Stucci. With, oh, no.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, those against?
Okay.
Unanimous. So I think we have but one thing left.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes dated September eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? I guess we have one more thing left.
You're gonna have me do it?
Well, whoever wants to do it, I don't really care.
I think George does it.
I'd like to, okay, George.
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?